Okay. I've been talking about that. But you remember?
We get paid for this?
What?
All right, it is nine o'clock. We will call the Bull County Fiscal Court Meeting to Orders, June 24th, 2025, at 9:00 a.m.
I know.
And Magistrate Harmon, we will call on you for our invocation.
All right, let's pray. Father, we thank you for being the God that you are, that you're able to understand all the messes we make down here and work even besides all of this. We thank you for what you've done in the Middle East, that peace is there now. And Lord, we'll take every day we get for that, not only there but throughout the world and even here in the United States. We pray for peace like you want it to be. Lord, we thank you for this court. We thank you for the opportunity to serve and to serve our people in Bull County. And Lord, that it may affect even those that are around us in other counties and throughout our state. We pray that what we do today will be your glory and your honor. Forgive us our sins, will we ask this in Jesus' name? Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Magistrate Harmon.
You're welcome.
All right, at this time, we have a special guest, Lincoln Henderson. Lincoln is a fourth grader at Junction City Elementary. And tell us who you have with you today, Lincoln?
My mom and dad.
Your mom and dad, yeah, all right. And what's their names?
Levi and Denise.
Levi and Denise, all right. Well, welcome. If you'll come up, we will stand and you can lead us in the pledge.
Because it's summer, so I'm going to be a question.
Just stand right, yep, there you go. All right, the floor is yours.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I forgot to add that Lincoln lives in Magistrate Bowner's district.
Good job.
All right. We're going to get a picture. How about that? Just come right over by me, turn around, there you go. There you go. All right, thank you so much. And you're welcome to stay and be entertained or you can run.
I recommend go. Run. Thank you all.
Bye.
Bye.
All right, next, I want to approve our previous meeting minutes of June the 10th. We have a special call meeting for LGEA funds, and then we have our regular meeting minutes. So motion to approve?
So moved.
Magistrate Gay, second. Magistrate Bowner, any discussion on the minutes? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed nay?
Judge, abstain for not being here for that meeting.
Okay. And just note that. Motion carries. Approve budget transfers.
Okay. I have essential yesterday afternoon revised budget transfer. And you have transfers in the amount of $468,110.76.
Okay, they have motion to approve? Magistrate Harmon, second?
Second.
Magistrate Gay, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed nay? Motion carries. Attorney here, would you turn that air a little cooler, please?
Yes.
It's a little warm in here this morning. Okay, cash transfer first.
I have $25,000 from the general fund to the road fund, $150,000 from the general fund to the jail fund, $10,000 from general to fleet.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve? Cash transfers. Magistrate Sleeper, is there a second?
Second.
Magistrate Bowner, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed nay? Motion carries. And now we will approve our bills. And Katina is having a bit of surgery this morning, so you all remember her, your thoughts and prayers, and Elena's going to fill in for her.
All righty, in your bill packet, you were sent a total amount of $354,020.96. Also passed out a piece of paper this morning as receipts. Those are the additional bills, since this is the very last meeting of the fiscal year. I pushed the department heads to get me as many invoices as they could to keep everything rolling smoothly. So we're going to add those to your bill packet total for a grand total of $366,887.25.
Can I, can I ask a question?
Yes.
Since we're going to be discussing something later on down the agenda, should we hold off on, on the bill approval?
We can.
It's on there.
Yeah, it's included in the packet.
So, yeah, maybe we should hold off.
Except pending approval. Okay, so there is a bill.
$2,882.
Thank you, because I did not bring my glasses with me.
Neither. $2,882.
There's a part.
Okay.
Anyway.
All right, so we can approve them pending, approve that one bill. Swipe. Okay, so we are going to go into our old business, but before that, if you are here to discuss anything about ATVs or UTVs or anything like that, we are not having any public comment during this meeting, but we are having a public meeting tonight, and everybody's welcome to come then and voice any thoughts or concerns, yeah, that you can have. That'll be at intercounty RECC at 6:00. So just want to make that public. Okay, good deal, good deal. That's all right. We like having public in our meetings, so you're welcome anytime. All right, then, so we'll go into old business, second reading of our 2526 budget and EFT standing orders. You can. Do you want to? Thank you, ma'am.
State approved the budget, or the LG, and then we just needed to add the local, or the standing order for the EFT transfers.
Okay, so we have the budget in the packet.
Oh. Second reading of 230, 221.31. Or the, or that's.
221.31.
Yes.
Okay. So let's approve second read, of the EFT standing orders with the budget, or are they separate?
Separate.
Separate.
Separate, okay, so let's approve the budget first. Second reading of the budget ordinance number 221.31.
So moved.
Have motion by Magistrate Gay, is there a second?
Second.
Whoa, tag teaming over there. We'll give this one to Magistrate Cullen. Magistrate Harmon's already had one, so we'll give this one to Magistrate Cullen. All right, so we have a motion and a second to approve second reading of the budget. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed nay? Motion carries. EFT standing orders, these are the vendors that we've added to pay electronically. And there's a list of them there. Is there a motion to approve? Make a motion to approve. Magistrate Bowner, is there a second?
Second.
Magistrate Gay, any discussion on the added vendors? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed nay? Motion carries. Second, under old business, is the second reading of ordinance 230.10. Steve, you have anything you want to add about that?
This is the personnel policy and the wage step.
Wage step.
It was never passed by ordinance, and this is the second reading.
Okay. All right, motion to approve second reading?
So moved.
Magistrate Gay, is there a second?
Second.
Magistrate Bowner? I was trying to give everybody a chance. Everybody's involved this morning. All right, we have motion and a second to approve second reading of ordinance 230.10. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed nay? Motion carries. All right, then we're up to our fleet proposal, and Julie, are you covering this?
I'm doing it. So we met with fleet yesterday with Kate Hedent, who is our representative, and started the process of what vehicles we would transfer over. We determined there would be 15 vehicles in the first cycle, plus three new police sheriff cars for the three officers yet to be hired. So that brought a total of 18 vehicles. We do not know the price until she prices them out, but she did present, and it was in your packets, the contracts for fleet. And so in order for us to proceed, we will need you to approve us to sign contracts, approve the judge to sign the contracts. So I hope you've all had a chance to look these over. Chris, do you have any?
Well, for every vehicle that you lease, each has its own contract. So say that you terminate one that doesn't terminate all of them. And termination, you have to give notice. It's effective the last day of any month upon not less than 60 days prior written notice. So if you think you like your, say you wanted to terminate the whole contract, but you only terminate one car, you're still on it for the rest of them, so.
Kind of like Christmas lights when I was growing up.
So that's.
You didn't know.
That's the one caveat I saw. You just don't, it's not all or nothing in itself. You have to do, terminate each one, each one has its own, like, contract.
Okay. Magistrate Gay or Magistrate Cullen, you all have anything you want to add?
Just the, one of the other things that we've still are working on is as we enter into the arrangement, this first go-round, we're still figuring out how we sell the vehicles that we currently have. As they become part of the fleet, it'll be smoother going forward, but because of the rules and regulations on disposing of government property, we'll have to, you know, we don't get, we're still looking at how we can sell the vehicles we have or what our different options are.
Good point.
Of the, right.
Yeah, of the 15 that we're going to end up leasing.
Like when we've gone to KCO, there's been like a exhibitor there, it's government sale, something. There's companies like that.
Right.
Where you can use to sell.
Yeah, go deals.
Go deals, yeah.
Magistrate Ellis?
Thank you, Judge. The only credit that I can take on this because Magistrate Bowner is the genesis of our doing this on behalf of our constituency and the tax issues and the savings that we're going to get over time with this lease arrangement. But the one thing that we always do, and I was the one who made the contact with our major suppliers of vehicles in the community, we always have an emphasis on buying local, buying within the county. And we went extensively into that, had presentations, and it just wasn't going to work out lease versus purchase, which is basically what came back to us from our major vendors in the community. And the savings, much again to the credit of Magistrate Bowner for, you know, pushing us toward this, I just wanted to make that public for both what she's done and our efforts to always buy local when we can. Thank you, Judge.
All right, thank you.
Just to clarify, Tom, too, the vehicles can actually be sent to the local dealerships. So that way, the final inspections go through them and they get a fee for that as well. They do get some, any warranty work that gets, that needs, needed to be done on these goes through the local dealerships. So that was one thing we discussed yesterday with, to make sure that the local dealerships still have some sort of revenue from us as well.
I wanted to comment. All right. I just made a comment like three years ago, do we have a fleet plan? That's all I said, and then these people did all the work, so really, you know, everybody else did more than I did, so.
Well, you presented the idea.
Well, I'm sure that idea's, I'm sure that idea's been there before I did, but it's, my son said, do y'all have a fleet plan? So I came in and said, do we have a fleet plan?
Yeah, yeah. All right, well, it takes teamwork, and that's one good thing about this court, is we work together as a team. So, you know, when one person has a good idea, somebody else jumps on that and everybody jumps in to help, so that's, that's a good thing about our court. All right, any other discussion on this?
Call the question.
All right, all those in favor of approving the fleet management agreement? Signify the motion.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you.
Second.
Magistrate Gay has a motion, second by Magistrate Cullen. All of those in favor of approving the enterprise fleet management agreement signify by saying aye. Any opposed nay? Motion carries. I was just so excited about the conversation.
Super excited.
Super excited. All right, going into new business, we have a couple of appointments for the library board, and Colleen is here today, and we have Laney, I'm going to mess this up.
Castaneda.
Castaneda. And Will Davis. Is Will here? Will's not here, okay. All right, so I would like to ask for approval to appoint these two people to the Bull County Public Library Board.
Make a motion.
Magistrate Cullen?
Second.
Second by Magistrate Bowner, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed nay? Motion carries. All right, Laney, if you will come up, we will present you with your certificate. And then I guess we'll mail Wheels to him, or?
Do you want a mail letter, do you want me to?
You can take it if you want. Yeah, you can take it if you want.
Okay. Got to get prepared.
Okay.
Help me a bit.
Pink in here, a little pink on pink.
It's a pink day.
It is.
Thank you for your service.
Of course, thank you.
Appreciate your service.
Thank you. Thank you all very much.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any good updates from the other?
We had last meeting, you missed it.
Always. I will send you a personal email.
Thank you very much.
And she's got this.
But please come to the Ponderosa Speedway at 11:00 on Friday mornings.
That's awesome.
All the things, but including a bookmobile race.
There you go.
And free hot dogs and hamburgers, and it's going to be Marion, Casey, Mercer and Boyle bookmobiles racing each other.
Oh, that's awesome. That's awesome.
The first one like ever in this state, I think.
And if you don't have this little flyer, this is full of events. For the library.
Yes. Thank you, Colleen.
Tell me all our secrets.
See you, Colleen, thank you.
All right, and next, we have two appointments to the planning and zoning. I'd like to recommend Tom Ruby be reappointed and Steve Griffin be reappointed. And Steve is here, Tom is not.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion by Magistrate Cullen, second by Magistrate Ellis, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed nay? Motion carries. Steve, if you will come up, we will give you your certificate.
Oh, that's Steve Griffin?
That's Steve Griffin.
He thought he was my brother.
That's Steve Griffin.
You want to take your vote back? Take my motion back?
Thank you so much. We appreciate you serving on the planning and zoning board.
Thank you.
You won't frame that, I'm sure.
Stick around, Steve.
Yeah, stick, stick around, we'll need you in a little bit.
No, I am, I'm up next.
Okay. And next on the agenda, we have HR Director Steve Griffin.
Yeah, I have a reappointment, a request for all our employees to be reappointed.
Can I make the motion on that?
Yeah, you did.
So moved.
Magistrate Gay, second? Magistrate Bowner? All right, any discussion? All those in favor of all of our employees being reappointed? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed nay?
Even Roger?
Motion carries. All right.
I'd like to introduce our new PFC Director Hannah. Hannah's been with us now over a couple weeks now, yes, and you've got current information or higher information in your packets, so just like you to welcome her.
All right.
Welcome.
Congratulations, welcome, welcome. Looking forward to working with you.
I'm very excited to be here. If you all need anything from me, and I'm in the city hall.
Because you're the city's new appointment, according to the newspaper.
Newspaper, nobody reads the newspaper.
Would you like to tell us anything about yourself, or would you like to say anything at all?
Yeah, I mean, my name's Hannah Gray, I'm born and raised in Kentucky. I'm living in Frankfurt currently, but will move to Boyle County sooner rather than later. And I'm just very excited to be here, I'm very grateful for this opportunity, and you know, if you all ever need anything, I'm right over there, and he has my information, so please feel free to reach out.
Where was your original home in Kentucky?
Originally J-Town, Kentucky, kind of like right in there in Louisville, but my grandparents are from Springfield and Corbin, so I like to say Danville.
Oh, you're all on the same, yeah.
Exactly, so I'm more of a slow-paced kind of person, so I really appreciate Boyle County and Franklin County and just everything.
We're fortunate to have our.
Yeah, I'm very lucky to be here.
We like to keep it slow around here.
I appreciate that, very much.
You're proven so.
Yes, sir, I'll keep that in the back room. But thank you all for having me.
All right, well, thank you for being here today.
Thank you.
We're lucky to have you.
I will be sending you my contact information, I've got that small blue area there.
The underdeveloped area.
Third world country.
It's nice to meet you all.
Yeah, nice to meet you.
Me too.
Thank you, Steve, appreciate that. Now we'll need you a little bit later, too, Steve.
I'll be back.
Okay. All right, next up is Jayler Woodford, and reentry coordinator. No.
Yeah, I wonder.
It's not on my agenda.
No.
Okay, not on my agenda, sorry. If you have a five-board appointment, it'll be at the next meeting. Next meeting. I don't have it on my agenda. Anyway, Jayler Woodford? And J-Town? The Brian and James Show.
Yeah. Been sitting too long there, Pastor?
Yeah, I'm getting old.
I heard something called me to death. Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you for going.
Thank you, thank you. Sorry, I'm short, you'll have to share it with the other. I need some lotion, some suntan lotion over here. There I got it, Billy.
So basically, you know, James has been our reentry coordinator since I came in, he's also our volunteer chaplain. He's a vital part of what our mission is as a detention center, is to have men and women coming out better than what they came in. And he fills in a lot of gaps that are missed with everything that's going on that we're trying to do. He's kind of the fill-all position for us, so he wears a lot of hats. So I'd ask him to come today, just to kind of give you all an update on what he's doing as the reentry coordinator, what our numbers are, because we may want to apply this to future, so I wanted you all to have some kind of ideal, what he's doing with.
All right, so I really appreciate Magistrate Harmon's prayer about what we do not only affects Bull County, but it affects the Commonwealth of Kentucky, because most of the programs that we are dealing with are state inmates, so, and since I've been there, and I appreciate Jayler Woodford giving me this opportunity to serve, because a lot of the guys that go through our program wish they could stay here in Bull County once they get out, and that speaks volumes. And of course, I believe we're all stakeholders in this process of criminal justice reform. I've become an advocate because I truly believe everybody deserves a second chance. It's only by grace that we're not behind bars, I truly believe that, because we all could have had another life, but God has blessed us to do good things for good people. So the first thing we have discussed is our two main programs is MRT and Portals, which MRT is more of a, and if you have a description there what MRT covers on page three, it's more of a cognitive-based evidence programming that we offer through the Department of Corrections. Then Portals is more of a life skills where we do budgeting and preparing for their reentry, they got to do a reentry plan. And so those are our numbers on page four, since, and I started, we started programming in 2020, and so since 2020, we have had over 243 individuals enroll in MRT, but we've only had 107 to complete, but that number is kind of skewed because most of the people that do not complete is transferred either to another facility once they get parole. So they can complete MRT in Portals at, 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 at the preparation of parole or whatever facility that they transfer to.
That's one thing, where they're state inmates, we don't have control. So if the state says, hey, they're being transferred, even though they're in the middle of the class, they still have to be transferred, so we don't have any control.
And, and, and which, which is a blessing, because like I said, like I said, what we do affects other counties and it affects the Commonwealth, too. So I pray what we're doing for other state inmates, other facilities that house Bull County inmates that's going through state programming, they're offering them the same benefits that we're going to get, that if they complete MRT, they get 90 days off their sentence, if they complete Portals, they get 60 days off their, off their, off their sentence. So that's good time credit. But what I did forget to put in this, last fiscal year, the state allocated $12.2 million to reimburse, so every time a person completes MRT, the county has reimbursed $1,000. Each time they complete Portals, the county has reimbursed $600. So if you put those numbers together, that's $10,000, you know, almost $20,000 plus dollars that the county has actually reimbursed when they actually complete those programmings. And another part of this, of course, what we're doing for substance use disorder, that special note that out of the 243 people that have pro, that has enrolled, we have had four overdose deaths since they were released. Two of them have actually completed MRT, so, but, so, but that's still good, that's good. National, for individuals that complete MRT, the statistics say 77.7% of those individuals that complete MRT do not reoffend for the rest of their lives. So it's worth the investment. So, so like I said, not only for our Bull County residents that, but also for, for, we, we impact the Commonwealth of Kentucky, too, what we do here, so.
And here's the great thing, of course, as chaplain, James volunteered all his time for that. As the reentry coordinator, no taxpayer money is spent on his salary, so I've been able to pay for what he does out of canteen and grants through, with partnerships with other folks here in the community. So there, there's no cost to the county for the services he provides, but we are bringing in revenue from that, plus we're also seeing capital built in the human lives that are changed when they go out.
Oh, we're very fortunate to have that.
And then, so, and then another of, of, documents for reentry, the birth certificates, the social security cards, that on page six, you'll see, we've had 21 states that have been represented that go through our, and so the jail pays for that out of canteen funds also, so today we paid over $3,000 something dollars to have these inmates get these important documents, because we're also trying to not only reduce recidivism, but we understand if they don't have those important documents, that's just a barrier to success for reentry. So we've been blessed to do that, and then, since COVID, the Department of Correction now has reentry individuals that come into the jails to help, so they've been doing the social security cards. So I really don't see social security cards unless we miss someone, they come through our Portals class. And then my other update is our chaplain update, you'll see, since, since June of 2025, we've had 40-plus volunteers that come in weekly, I provide a weekly schedule for volunteers, and then that's a blessing. Our community comes in and they serve, I mean, somebody's at the jail every day of the week, and we have people waiting to get in, which is a blessing for our, our county speaks volumes of how people really believe in second chances, and these people are volunteering their time to come in. Since 2020, we've had 130 inmates to go public with their faith, where our baptism, which our baptism services, our Good Friday and our Thanksgiving, Christmas service has been one of the biggest. I've been in ministry for 38 years, and just to see our volunteers and these inmates go public with their faith has been just a blessing, man. It, it is just, when they come out of water, and sometimes when we have a baptism, some inmates and say, I want, they're not on the list, but they want to get into it in the water, too, so we never, so we, as, as the.
Don't turn anybody down.
We don't turn anybody down. Come on in, the water is fine. You know, so.
James?
Yes, sir.
Your document answers your, yours and our Jayler's, Doc's, major question that I've that I already made some notes while you were talking. Make sure, folks, to look at the bottom of page six and all of page seven. I'm just back from a five-state conference representing Centenary Methodist Church. And I was going to mention this without, and I was going to ask the question, knowing what's happened with ecumenical pastors coming in. It's remarkable that you documented since 2020 130 baptisms. Folks, oftentimes, it's said that we're not a Christian nation. I'm passionate about history, and one of the things that when I give a Gideon speech that I always mention is our first Chief Justice of the United States Supreme Court, John Jay, was quoted as saying, "In choosing our elected officials, we should prefer..." And that's an active word right there, because we're open in our jail and we're open in society to all religions. But he said, "In choosing our elected officials, we should prefer Christians." And to see this in print, to see the pictures and everything that you're accomplishing, and the tremendous 77% who go through life and don't recommit crimes. This is an extraordinary document, thank you.
And then on page eight, which this is an addendum that I added going back. We had the Prison Fellowship, if you remember. Charles Colson, he was part of Nixon's administration that went to prison. He established the Prison Fellowship, so in 2021, they opened this Life Recovery Bible to local jails all across America. And I mean, they end up having to go back and reprint. We tried to order some more, they're like, we can't issue them back to jails because we just don't have the resources. So, but we passed our 425 Life Recovery Bibles, and that includes the 12 steps for those individuals that are still dealing with substance use disorder. And then of course, we do, each inmate has a constitutional right to practice their religions. And so on page 10, you'll see some of the sacred texts that we have passed out since 2020. So the top two were Holy Bibles, Quran, and the Edas. Those are like Odinism, which is the North, and then of course, there are Satanic Bibles. But so they do have a constitutional right to practice their religion. So we, as the chaplain, we do not impede that constitutional right. So we just wanted to make sure all of our inmates are still, still have that right to practice their religion. And then, of course, we had it, we did, when we first started MRT, we weren't issuing MRT coins, but that is just a little positive step. It's like a chip for recovery. When they graduate, man, they want that coin. For some, I guess, it's like in military, when we have our challenge coins, everybody like, and so some of the guys that were still there, that hadn't, when they graduated, we did, they're like, can I give my coin? Yes, you can get your coin, long as you graduate MRT. But like I said, it's just been an honor to serve Jayler Wolford and the county because I truly believe we are making an impact, like I said, not only to our citizens in Boyle County, but to the Commonwealth of Kentucky. And like I said, our county inmates that are at other facilities, Boyle County residents that are at other facilities, they're getting the same opportunity to hope. But I still think we have the best there is, because some of the stuff that we started, DOCs, like us, DOC is starting to see the hard work that we're doing. So it's just an honor to serve in our community, to give people a second chance and help impact people's lives for positive change. So it's just an honor to serve.
And James, along with the service that you do, I'd also mention with Jayler Wolford and a colleague of ours on the court, Magistrate Harmon, a colleague of mine with Gideon's, a fellow named Les Purrier. How many years back? Has been a jail pastor, coming in time and time again.
Yeah.
Probably nearly 20 years, I think.
Yeah, 20 years, more.
Thank you all for the update, James. We're blessed to have you as an employee at our detention center. And Brian Wolford did good that time.
Well, if you don't know, James is a retired Air Force First Sergeant, highest level security clearance, DOD contractor. And I truly believe God brought James back to Boyle County for a reason. He's a big part of what we do, and I'm grateful I had him, not only as my bridge coordinator, but as a friend, so. And then I also have to say, one of the reasons we're so successful at the detention center is because I have a great mentor, and so I appreciate that.
But Brian wasn't a jailer. He wasn't even a jail at all. He was the officer, went out, laid up in the woods undercover. He had hair down to here. He worked undercover and for different agencies. And came to the office one day, and we, first thing we did, we prayed together. I said, "Brian, why don't you come out of that undercover stuff and come here and prepare to be the jailer?" So he came, he resigned, he came to the jail and worked and went to different departments and areas. And Brian came and he learned what the jail was about. If he hadn't, he'd have sunk. I knew that, because I went and didn't have anybody to guide.
People don't realize how many moving parts happen during the day and everything. But I'm grateful that I had Barry as a mentor. So this goes back to June of '24 for my numbers. So our total bookings for '24 to '25, and we cut, I cut this off a couple of days early, so it doesn't go over a month, but it's 2,199. We released 2,242. Our average daily population has been running about 54 in Boyle, 67 states, and that includes SAP and 31 Mercer. Right now, we're holding, I think, we were 10, and then yesterday, so we had five for Mercer. So even though we have that 20-bed agreement, but they're still, they're in the process of moving their folks out, so they'll be out by the end of the month. Our current staffing is at 35 full-time employees, two part-time. I do have one employee that is on, in the middle, on active duty military service right now overseas. So I'm holding a guest spot for him. I'm hoping if nothing else happens, he'll be back October, November. So we are looking, we still have kind of two positions, one male, one female, we're looking for. So far as our staff training, DOC requires 40 hours. Our Boyle County recruit training, classroom and hands-on, we do 160 hours. Because you, and this is a job, you think about this, these folks hold the most liability of anybody in the county. If there's going to be a federal lawsuit, most likely it's going to be coming out of the detention center. So far, we've not had that. So that's why we train. So they get 160 hours before they actually start a shift, and then 24 hours after that each year. And I'm happy to say that all of our staff have completed the Alzheimer Association Approaching Alzheimer's. So to recognize the signs and symptoms, of course, when we had that incident, it was one of my deputies that actually said, hey, there's something not right here, and called that out, made sure we got medical attention, so. And then as far as the physical plant, we've had two inspections with minor deficiencies. Those are stuff like plumbing issues, which is a daily issue. When we get those parts, they were fixed within a couple of days. But the past year, we did have multiple gas leaks that were found on our HVAC units and gas lines going into those units. All those have been inspected and repaired. So there's no issues with that. And then when we had the boiler incident initially, most inspectors suggested the boiler was leaking gas. But we had the boiler serviced, so we had new rods, gaskets, new relief valves, and the mixing valve is the piece that goes in. I was telling you all the last time, that keeps the water from coming out, going out too hot into the showers. We still have some work to do on each individual shower, because there has to be a secondary thing there. So as those parts come in, we're fixing it. We can't, for some reason, we can't get them all in. So as we get them in, we're replacing those. But there was no gas leaks found on the boiler, thank goodness. And then we also, of course, we had the fire there at the recycling center. It basically happened on our restricted custody inmates. They were evacuated. Our smoke evac system worked the way it's supposed to work. The staff responded the way they were trained to. There was no injuries to staff or inmates, and of course, it's only limited damage from smoke, and all that's been cleaned up. So that's kind of the report. Our work crew, of course, we're currently working on the windows. They're working on the windows for Constitution Square, repairing those back to.
They're doing a great job.
They are.
They're doing a great job.
Historic value. We participated with the fair. We helped out, they helped out the Boyle County Fair. They worked imperable. Here recently, they've been adjunction. They repaired, put a new bed in a trailer, done mowing, weeding around the side, of course, they do cemetery, other things on there. And then that's pretty much it. Let's ask questions. But also, Judge, we've never scheduled a date for the jail work group moving forward on jail plans. I was going to say, just remind, we need to pick a date for that.
We'll get that scheduled, yeah.
And then one last thing, the Boyle County Detention, Boyle County Detention Center Thespians Society will be participating in the Fort Brim play again this year. And I think they're looking, Sandy texted me yesterday, and I think they're looking for a few more volunteers to be in the play. So then, aspiring thespians, if I like to be in the play.
Yeah, we need to sign Steve up.
I'll let her know. Anyone else? You're only brave one, Judge, you're not.
I can't do it, because I've already got a commitment for the Saturday night of the Fort Brim.
Lock her up.
He's holding out for Donkey Ball.
It's like the second week, yeah.
Second weekend.
Second weekend in November.
No. Yeah, second weekend of October.
He's still not a grandpa yet, but it's close.
I was getting ready to ask, do we have any progress?
End of, well, yeah, there's progress. Hopefully, end of July.
July, okay, yes. We both got little girls coming in July.
I'd say in his spare time too, Brian is an author, and he's got, how many books should be written?
I've got three of them, so. Six total.
And I like, the report has a typo on it, and it says Brain Wolford.
Brain, okay.
So it's really not a misprint?
We know who the brain is.
Thank you for your report, yeah. Appreciate you.
Auto correct. Is that auto correct? It's every time. Thank you.
Y'all have a good day. Thank you very much.
Hey Judge, speaking of culinary hour, you got a pun there.
Oh, yeah. We need to have a gas chef cook-off. That's what we need to do. All right, next up, we have Public Works Supervisor Roger Johnson.
Morning.
Morning.
Happy birthday. Looks like I'm the last one here today.
Department head, anyway.
Well, I'm here to ask for a little more money.
Of course you are.
Like I normally do at my show, look.
Hey, you remember when they call last or something, if you remember that.
Well, to make the long story short, we have come up a little bit short on money for our paper. So I'm here to ask for $2,820 extra over the, well, the amount would be $57,820.
Still under what you budgeted.
I make second.
Motion by magistrate Ellis, second by magistrate Bowner, any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Well, we should, for the public, since they're listening, explain slightly why that happened. And it's all over the nation because of actions that we have no control.
It was a tariff thing that actually happened. And purchasing this machine is that it was actually before the first of the year, when we got all the quotes and all that. And then, of course, after the first of the year, then they was tariffs put on this, because this machine is made in Italy.
At the national level.
At the national level. So the time we got the quote, got the money, then it came back around to us again. Then it was an additional add-on for the tariff. So that's how this happened.
Still under budget, so.
It's still under budget, you know, we've accomplished that part of it, and we're just.
And no American man.
Finally to get this done. I've been working on it for six months now, trying to get all this taken care of, but.
It's a sole source provider.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, it's sole source, so, yeah.
And it will be well-used.
Well.
It's not the potholes, Tom, it's not the potholes.
And we're working on those too.
Nine forty-four.
All right, any other questions, discussion on that? All those in favor of the motion signify the same aye. Any opposed aye? Motion carries. Thank you, sir.
Can I give you just a little update?
You can, yes, you can stand there and.
So the guys at the road department are out now picking up limbs and stuff in the storm that was two weeks ago or whatever it was. We just finally got through our first round of mowing, because it was so wet and everything, raining, and it just took us a little longer to get through.
It's rain mowing.
So I'm sure that that's what me and Tom have talked about. So, you know, the people that got their roads mowed first are now to the point where they need.
They're ready to go, yeah, yeah.
To just let everybody know is that we've got other things that we need to get done before we start mowing again, because of, you know, it's just.
All the right.
How things have turned out, you know, the storms and the flooding and everything. So I just want to give a little update. Don't worry, we'll be back out there mowing.
Be patient.
Just be patient. We got some potholes we need to get taken care of, some tree limbs we need to get taken care of, and we're going to start working on them before we start mowing again. So as soon as we get kind of caught up on things, we'll get right back to mowing, so that's the.
I wanted to mention, I thanked Tom and he about the dry fork, the bridge. I probably going a little bit too fast, but I hit it every time. I forget there's a big, they had torn it out to work on it.
Work on it.
And the gravel would settle, and I'd, wham, so that is now takes.
We did get some more gravel put back in there, but we're going to work on that and get that filled in blacktop and all that. We got some other places that, you know, we've got cutouts that we need to work on also, you know, so.
I appreciate.
We'll get to it, it's just, you know.
I appreciate all the work. You've been doing a lot of work.
Y'all are doing a great job.
Says reverse speed bumps.
Yeah, that's a speed bump, when I think of it.
Well, you know, we can make a speed bump out of that. Cut a ditch across the road. Won't be a bump, it'd be a ditch.
Will you just take it easy on, go Matt Kim, and I know he works extra hard for you.
Yeah, he does.
You all put in a lot of work for the fair too, so you've been moving bleachers and stuff like that.
Today and all that, and then working on some tree stuff today also. And, you know, I've just been telling the guys to, you know, drink plenty of water and, and, you know, stay hydrated and.
That's all right.
Take care of yourselves.
Don't overheat magistrate Ellis.
Somebody falling out.
Judge, to Rogers' and his crew's credit, when you call him on Sunday afternoon, you don't even hear a groan. He goes and gets the job done, and that is much appreciated by our constituents. Thank you.
Well, that's what we get paid to do, so, you know, we're taking care of the community and the whole, the whole community, so.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
All right.
You have a good day, stay cool. I know you're not going to, but.
Thanks.
All right.
Yeah, we gotta go back to bills.
Yes, we can. So can we get a motion to approve paying the bills, including the new bill that was missed? Motion?
Make motions.
Sheriff Bowner, is there a second?
Second.
Sheriff Gay, all those in favor signify the same aye. Any opposed aye? Motion carries. All right, Ms. Shannon?
I'm presenting the monthly settlement for May.
Thank you.
Yeah, court acknowledges. Any questions, comments from the court? Did a good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, county administrator, keep it right here.
In the packet is a resolution for the establishment of Boyle. In your packet is a resolution for the establishment of the two, of Bull County Two Hundred and Fiftieth Committee, we are passing this today because we submitted a grant for ten thousand dollars that went in on Wednesday, and we need to have this resolution sent to the Historical Society, so that when they review our application, they can see that you endorsed the forming of a committee. So, do you'd like to read it, Judge?
Do we read, okay. Alright, whereas the Kentucky General Assembly created the Kentucky Centennial Commission to Plan, Encourage, Develop, and Implement Events to Celebrate the Two Hundred and Fiftyth Anniversary of the United States and to Recognize Kentucky's Role in the Nation's Past, Present, and Future, and whereas America Two-Fifty-KY has a mission to engage all Kentuckians across all one hundred and twenty counties to officially recognize programs, projects, and events, and whereas America Two-Fifty-KY will educate citizens of the Commonwealth about the history of all Kentuckians and the national experiment of the pursuit for the inalienable rights of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness, and the impact Kentucky's history has had on American, American history, whereas America Two-Fifty-KY recognizes Kentucky's presence at the crossroads of multiple historic events and Kentucky's significant political and cultural influences on the nation at large, both historically and in the present, whereas America Two-Fifty-KY understands the importance of exploring state and local history to better understand Kentuckians' roles and responsibilities within our communities today, whereas by adoption of America Two-Fifty-KY's mission, the Bull County Committee is officially formed to help achieve the goals of America Two-Fifty-KY, and whereas Judge Executive Trilly L. Bottom appointed former Bull County Judge Executive Tony Walter as the Chairman of the Bull County Committee, now therefore be it resolved that the County of Bull hereby endorses America Two-Fifty-KY and its mission to plan, encourage, develop, and implement events to celebrate the Two Hundred and Fiftyth Anniversary of the United States and to recognize Kentucky's role in the nation's past, present, and future, and resolve the County of Bull officially established an America Two-Fifty-KY County Committee made up of a diverse group of citizens to coordinate events, programs, and plans with America Two-Fifty-KY, it is further resolved that a copy of this resolution be sent to the Kentucky Historical Society, the administrative agency of the America Two-Fifty-KY Committee, this commemoration will recognize the people, places, and events that created our shared history over the past two hundred and fifty years, allowing us to examine Kentucky's role in developing the United States and how our country's ideas of freedom, liberty, and justice have evolved since seventeen seventy-six using educational programs, events, and activities, this important anniversary will showcase how our past and the ideas of the American Revolution can help us understand who we are today and prepare for the future, adopted this twenty-fourth day of June twenty twenty-five. We have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Administrator Ellis, is there a second?
Second.
Administrator Sleeper, any discussion? All those in favor signify the saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed nay? Motion carries, thank you, there are a lot of events being planned, and some fundraisers, and lots of different things going on, we'll have an update at some point.
I do have a little announcement.
Okay.
Judge Walter received a call last week from Stuart Sanders at the Historical Society, they had a little money left over from the previous round of grants, and so they are awarding us five thousand five hundred dollars.
That's awesome.
In addition to the grant we put in for talent, so.
That's great, it's going to be a really nice year, next year, where all the events are going to be going on, so we'll have an update on, on the events and things as they get planned, and we have pretty much an idea of what, what's going to be going on.
And if you want to shoot your flip lock or percussion rifle, we're going to have a major event.
That's right, yeah, yeah.
It's going to be a lot of fun.
Well, a parade on July the fourth of next year, so it's going to be, be a big, big time, so we want everybody that can to participate. Okay, also in your packet is EMS revenue report, just FYI information, and at this time, I would like a motion to go into executive session, percentage carry is sixty-one, eight, ten, paragraph one, paragraph F, discussions or hearings which might lead to the appointment, discipline, or dismissal of an individual employee, member, or student without restricting that employee, member, or student's right to a public hearing, if requested, this exception shall not be interpreted to permit discussion of general personnel matters in secret.
So moved.
Administrator Gay, is there a second? Administrator Bodner, all those in favor signify the saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed nay? Alright, this time, we will go into executive session, I'll have to ask all of our guests to leave at this time.
What did Jamie volunteer to clean cages?
Yeah.
Are we back on the record?
It should be.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
All right. We are back live. I'll entertain a motion to return to regular session.
I make a motion to return to regular session.
Okay, magistrate Ellis, is there a second?
Second with no action taken.
Maître Cullen, no action taken. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed, no? Motion carries. All right, we'll go into our magistrate reports and today we'll start with magistrate Harmon.
Looked like we had a good fair. The weather held till Friday night. And the truck hauls and all of those went well, I heard each one. South Indiana was so blessed now.
I know, right?
Once a year. Now the fireworks started. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Maître Cullen?
I hope we all can attend the gathering place grand reopening on July 2nd at 10:00 a.m. This court contributed a certain amount of money towards that for a great cause. So hopefully we'll all be able to make it out there. And then this week, I gained a son-in-law. My amazing daughter Ava got married. She didn't think she was going to marry in Kentucky, she fought against it and then found a beautiful venue over River Gorge that she loved. And so, hard day to be a dad, but also a good day.
Congratulations.
That's it, that's all I got.
All right, magistrate Cullen?
Congratulations on that. And I don't have anything, I'm all good.
All right, good deal. Maître Flipper?
I have a whole page of stuff. I'm going to admit most of it because I think the executive session will do my fault. Since I requested it.
Who teaches you?
Yeah. It'll be in writing, the county boys get a written copy of my report. Anyway, on June 10th though, the planning and zoning did approve, the zoning changed for the family services property in which we're putting the homeless coalition seeks to put down the new ground. Long-term transitional housing and program to assist those seeking more permanent housing and self-sustainability. So, next step it'll go to the city commission for approval. Animal control committee meeting was held on June 16th. Briefly, shelter is not at maximum capacity, if that's a good thing. Medical and vaccination care is really good, there've been long breaks in the past six months because typically within the year there'll be at least a kennel cough or oxidosis outbreak or something, there have been none of that. They are administering sometimes 20-plus vaccinations a day. They administer 46 rabies vaccines at comparable rabies clinic. Spaying and neutering is backed up at this time for about a month due to veterinary issues with Happy Paws. And so, waiting for that to get better. There's been a large increase in number of wildlife calls. So far it's been the busiest year in wildlife that Alaska knows of. The staff will be attending their NACA, which is their National Animal Control Association or Accreditation Training. It'll include new certifications for some, recertification for some. Cat euthanasia is up 8% over last year and you heard Elias, Elias talked about 90, the cat population, the intake rather has been 90% above what it was over the last year and it's 95% of what it was six months ago. But euthanasia is up 8% over last year, but it's only sick and injured cats that are being euthanized that can't, have no hope of recovery. Director Delbridge recommended an increase in partnership with Happy Paws and would like the county to look at a cremation service that would save the county money in the long run. We'll address that later on. I would like, this is not an official part of, oh wait, I got a little stuff here. This afternoon's memorial service for the homeless man Brett Lane who died in that tent fire has been moved inside, still 2:00, but it will be inside after he checks due to the heat, humidity forecasted. This is not a part of my official report, but I wanted to address some social media postings that were made regarding armadillos and leprosy. I want to, I was a little concerned because I'm afraid that it could be alarming and cause undue panic. Possums were first noticed in Western Kentucky 40 years ago.
Armadillos.
I'm just, possum.
Possum on the half shell.
Thank you, armadillos 40 years ago. Of course they've made their way, it appears to be in Deboyle County now. And I know there's been the concern about leprosy with the armadillos. 20% of armadillos do harbor the microbacterium leprae bacteria that causes leprosy, but 95% of people are immune to it. It is endemic in this part of the country. There are only about 225 cases of leprosy in the entire United States in a year's time. Florida has seen an uptick in cases, central Florida, but they're still only around about 20 cases a year. As you look at that, you know, with around 200 cases, that's less than one in a million. When you have 340 million people in this country. It is a treatable disease, it's very effectively treated with antibiotics, there's a three antibiotic regimen they give. My personal experience with microbacterium leprae is merely getting samples from the College of American Pathologists to test my lab proficiency testing and they were always attenuating samples. But it's just, you know, people get it, I think because of the Bible, the threat that leprosy was, but 2,000 years ago there were not antibiotics for leprosy. And then actually the biblical term when they use leprosy is really a classification of a whole host of very contagious skin diseases, not necessarily Hansen's disease that we're talking about. And like I say, there was no treatment, so that's why it was such a big deal. So, and older articles cite that only armadillos and humans get leprosy, but they've found since discovered that some other non-human primates get leprosy. So chimpanzees for example, so the chimpanzees start moving in Boyle County, you know. But, unless you're going to eat the flesh and play with the feces.
No thanks.
And or take one on as a pet and snuggle with it, it needs to be prolonged exposure from human to human.
Do you like some burgoo though?
So, anyway, it is a serious disease in that it does affect, not just, doesn't produce just a skin lesion, it does produce neurological issues because it destroys the swan shells of the body. But there again, the incidence is so low that the probability is extremely low and it is treatable. So I just wanted to assure the public on that. So, that's it.
Thank you. Maître Ellis?
Well folks, I respectfully disagree with Steve on this.
He's got the scientific proof though, Tom.
No, there's no scientific proof to what he said about the susceptibility to get, folks, I'm deadly serious about this and there was a lot of laughter about this. But I'm disappointed Steve that we didn't talk ahead of time. Because I've communicated with our director of public health, I've communicated with a physician who has had these on his farm. I think that we do have a concern to bring issues of the kind of consequence, I even thought about getting some pictures of Americans today who did not realize I even thought about getting some pictures of Americans today who did not realize that three, three years ago, five years ago, in some cases documented 20 years ago, they handled, loved on or disposed of roadkill. Um, and all of a sudden, the doctors are trying to figure out what they have in the United States of America. This is a very serious issue because my research shows that any contact with fluids from an armadillo that does have the virus, um, can easily manifest itself. If I sneeze on my colleagues and don't know for five years to, as much as 20 years ago that I was exposed and I now have it, I can transmit it to another human being. So folks, um, we would be remiss if we did not go through some of the available information on the internet to train our animal control officers, to train anybody who might be exposed when they're out cutting limbs away or any of the, or clearing a dead armadillo from our properties, uh, or anybody's properties. So I would urge that we work through our Director of Public Health to find the appropriate program. And you are well aware of communicable diseases. I, with 26 years in healthcare administration, have been shocked by some of the cases that I got involved in over that period of time where people had no idea that they had an exposure to something. Um, as a hunter, I rarely, excuse me, will even deal with a dead coyote or a dead fox or, or any dead animal, not knowing if they're carrying rabies. And they appear to be perfectly healthy when people called me to see if I could take care of them. So with all due respect, we must do something with the Department of Health to convey to our folks, uh, I would recommend that somehow, uh, and there are available services to do this, which I also found in my research, there are firms that will come out and pick them up off our county roads, off our state roads, because there are many entities that have refused to deal with them because there's that one in nth opportunity for exposure and five years later, your physician trying to figure out what's wrong with you.
Do we know how many have been spotted in Boyle County?
I know that I've heard from three other people that, some people have spotted them as much as five and six years ago.
But, but one. One, I mean, how many armadillos have we had?
I have no idea.
Okay, okay.
I have no idea.
How many cases of leprosy are there in Boyle County?
Steve, I don't want to say what I wanted to say. I, I really don't because.
But, you know, to provide a little context, okay, take tularemia, rabbit fever.
Yeah, my football coach got it and nearly died.
My dad, it's 60% fatal, his fatality rate is 60%, leprosy does not.
Leprosy is disfiguring to the point where you, you should be glad that I did not bring pictures that I found on the internet of Americans today suffering from the disease because it was not properly diagnosed. Uh, I think we ought to end this, I think we ought to end this conversation before I say what I'd really like to say, period. I'll move on to my next issue. Um, please, everybody come out today, uh, tonight for the, uh, public hearing on, on the ATVs and side-by-sides. I'm concerned with the hearsay that I've gotten about approval of manufactured homes. It's either Illinois or Indiana, uh, has major production of manufactured homes that would rival any of the fine homes that we have in Boyle County. But when I dug a little bit deeper, I found out that that mobile home could be 54 feet long and have a little bit of porch on the front of it because it's a manufactured home.
There's a difference, a mobile home has a V number. Okay, so there is, right, we learned.
Yes, yes.
That a mobile home has a big number and a manufactured home does not.
But it doesn't change the elevation of that home and unfortunately, the state has passed a mandate a year out. And the more I learn about this, if, if it confirms what I suspect is going on, I'll be in Frankfurt on my own unless the court approves it, uh, championing the cause of not plopping one down between two $350,000 houses, which is not a terribly expensive house today. Okay, um, let's see, let's move my numbers around. Uh, tomorrow we're gonna have a make-up meeting, my fault because of some health issues.
Well, my, my fault too, I was on vacation, so.
But, but we're gonna have a make-up meeting of the jail committee. Please, if you haven't been down to Constitution Square and sat on the benches, they're remarkably comfortable. I'm gonna stretch out, put a newspaper over my face and just take a nap on them because they're, they're glorious. And if you see, um, Joey Harris from Danyo, anybody you know from Danyo, because a whole team, uh, got together to spruce them up even more than they had done at BCTC, if you see the staff at BCTC, same thing, uh, thank them for it. The last thing I'll bring up today is, uh, LifeLock has announced that either 16 or 19 million passwords have been compromised. Um, and on the news, uh, it was Fox, on Fox News, they were saying, alert your IT people to beef up any security that they already have in place. And then on the news, uh, it was that Iran may well try to jam technology, that's the highest level of sophistication that I can call it. Uh, so we need to be all the more, and I know Bill will hear this, uh, but we need to be all the more alert on the things that can happen, either surreptitiously by Iran or simply because some of us may have lost our passwords in the last few days, so, Judge, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Magistrate Ellis. Magistrate Vogt?
Uh, July 7th is Junction City Matters meeting, 5:30 at Junction City Hall. And, uh, be glad to see anybody that wants to come. And I was real tickled that J.J. Harris had his meeting at Junction City. Of course, I was on vacation, so I couldn't go to be there, I would have enjoyed that. Um, waiting on the Historical Society to see if we can get some funding, uh, for, uh, the old jail in Junction City. Uh, so we're trying to get some money to do some historical work on that for a community center. Uh, still waiting, they, July 2nd was, I mean, June 2nd was the last day to have that in, so we'll find out something maybe by the next meeting. July 3rd is fireworks at Junction City Park. The Fire Department auxiliary always sell, you know, uh, hot dogs and drinks and things like that at the pavilion, so be glad to see everybody there and that's all I have.
You said Junction City Matters, it's on the 7th?
7th, that's the first Monday, isn't it? I looked at it quickly, let me.
At 5:30, right?
Yep.
Okay.
5:30.
I just want to put that on my calendar, I won't think about it.
That's the first Monday, I think.
Can you remind it then of the reading erasers again?
The, the 11th.
The 27th.
Yeah, the, yeah, this Friday, I thought she, Colleen mentioned it as she was going out.
Mention it again.
Mention it again. It's at the Ponderosa, and I had it out here to do and I've read it and everything. There's so much in this little thing for kids and adults and everything, this is a wonderful thing that the library's done and all the things. But yes, 11 o'clock, and I will be able to be there Friday, 11 o'clock, have the big race.
That right there, all the more reason why we need a satellite location in Junction and Preparable.
Yeah, and this is awesome, right here. All the stuff they created is great.
All right, thank you very much. Um, Kenny, very?
Yes, uh, we're basically at the county attorney's office, uh, crime seems to pick up, uh, as it gets warmer out, people are out and about more than, when it's cold and staying in their homes. Our office is going, uh, doing training on Thursday regarding the entopscizer 8,000, uh, that's what they administer, not like when someone gets pulled over for a DUI, initially that's a field test, but then you head back to the police station. So we're gonna be trained on that so we can be even better when we're prosecuting DUIs in court when we have a trial. So I'm looking forward to that on Thursday. I wanted to, you know, wish everyone a happy 4th of July coming up, but you need to be safe when using fireworks. Actually, residents of Boyle County can use fireworks July 3rd, 4th and 5th from the hours of 10:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. So there are laws as to that, I wanted to let everyone know that because I already heard Mr. Barry Harmon talking about he's hearing fireworks now. There's also rules as far as you're supposed to be 18 years of age to use fireworks.
Exactly.
Purchase fireworks, things like that, so.
What's the, what's the county on the fireworks?
It's.
I know the city.
July 3rd, 4th and 5th, 10:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m.
Can you send that to me? Is that a county, because I don't.
Well, it's, it's in Danville, uh.
That's a city.
I was trying to find our, our Boyle County.
We don't have one.
And we don't necessarily have one, but it would be, uh, at least if you're in the city. And that's what I recommend, just be careful because especially now, uh, yes, it has rained a lot, but now it's gonna.
Now it's dry.
Dry it all out and that can cause fires and so forth, so just, just exercise caution with your fireworks. I also wanted to point out, uh, the Shepherd's House is having a run, uh, and that's on July the 26th at Keeneland, 8:00 a.m. It's the Shepherd House Run for Recovery and that's a really good event to go to. Shepherd's House also is having free lunch Fridays there until food runs out. I've attended a couple of times, uh, it, it's a really good event, different businesses have sponsored the food. County Attorney actually, office is actually gonna sponsor it here in the next week or two, so.
Is it gonna be spam?
I don't think a lot of spam, that's not for everybody, but I was thinking about maybe even getting a big bologna and, um, smoking it, I think that would be kind of something different.
Lonny Barney-ants.
So, I think that's something I might explore. Other than that, be safe this summer, be safe on our lakes. You can also get a DUI, it's called a BUI, operating a boat on our lakes, so beware of that, be careful.
I think our lake's shut down, Aaron.
No, it's, it's, it's going.
Has that out?
It's going though, I mean, it has the Alga, Alga, however you say it, in a certain section of it, but.
My friends are just at the lake section.
I know, but the lake is very much, the marinas, everything's open for business, so please still come out and enjoy the lake, just in the affected areas, it's not recommended that you swim in those areas, but the lake is open for business.
And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you very much.
Julie, I have two kind of breaking news things. The first is I just learned that our roof project at Constitution Square that we submitted for a last-minute tax credit request to see, we're going to receive $45,392.20 in rebate on the roofs.
How much was that again?
Just got the award letter sitting here, so that's good.
Very good.
So now we're gonna spend it.
Yes.
Thank you, Jacob, thank you.
Yes, thank you, yes. Um, I've received, yesterday about 5:00, the judge and I received the plans for Fred Kane for the sprinklers and, um, I'd like to go ahead and get those submitted instead of waiting till the next fiscal court meeting.
Did we get some relief from the plan that was just gonna be overwhelming?
Well, they did the work, okay, the engineers did the work. We do have to sprinkle, um, what we were told that we probably would have to sprinkle in both buildings, so to submit the application, it looks like it's gonna cost about $1,135. That includes a $400 rush review fee. So what I'd like to do is get permission to go ahead and get that check approved so that we can submit these, otherwise we're gonna either have to call a special meeting or wait two weeks till the next, actually, it might be more than two weeks, for the next fiscal court meeting.
Motion.
Okay, yeah.
I make a motion.
Motion by Magistrate Ellis. Second by Magistrate Harmon. Any discussion? All those in favor signify saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries.
Thank you. So on Fred Kane, I'll just continue, we are out to bid on the exterior paint and the garage doors, so those are the two things that we can work on while we're waiting for the sprinkler review. Um, I met with the pickleball group last Wednesday and talked to them about the pickleball courts. They have sent me an extensive RFP from another community that I can kind of use to model ours, so I'll be working on that. Um, tomorrow, yeah, Thursday, we're meeting with Public Safety Codell for every other week meeting. Um, Allen Springs Bike Park, I have the RFP about 90% done, I've submitted it to a couple of you just to look over, and I am finally, I think, pretty close to going to bid on Buster Pike Bridge. We got the last hurdle, looks like they're finalizing, so we'll be able to go to bid soon.
Oh my gosh.
So, I think that's probably the best news that Magistrate Cullen could get when they give us the thumbs up to go.
No.
But we're very close.
Paul's news is more, more impressive than that one, actually.
We're excited about it.
Working on Allen Springs Bike Park.
Thank you, yeah.
I meant you agreeing with me.
Oh, yeah, that was pretty, that was pretty good.
That was.
That won't happen again.
That was handsome. Sorry, but yes, thank you very much.
That it? Okay, thank you, ma'am. Shannon?
I'm sorry, I missed the cash transfer one, we're doing cash transfers earlier.
Okay.
One, two, transfer $200,000 from the general fund to EMS.
Make that a motion.
Second.
Motion by Magistrate Cullen, second by Magistrate Sleeper. Any discussion? All those in favor signify the saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? I messed up on the second, didn't I?
No, he got it.
Barry was looking at me like, oh, okay. I was looking down, I wasn't looking up to see who actually was talking, because you all sound like each other when I'm not looking at you.
Give her that mark, look.
Yeah, yeah, that's it. Okay, close this out and we'll get out by 12. Uh, the EDA has hired an architect and I wish I could tell you his name, but I don't have it in front of me, it's something like Van Steed or Jamie, do you know?
I don't know.
Van Steedland?
Van Steedland.
Van Steedland, Van Steed, yeah, okay. Uh, for, to prepare the master plans for the Redding property, we're meeting today at noon, uh, with him to go over that.
Yeah, I know, it's exciting.
Uh, Thursday, the Hampton Inn is having their anniversary celebration starting at 3:00 p.m., everybody's invited to that. Uh, we've already talked about tonight's public meeting, RECC, 6:00 to 7:30, come out. Looking ahead, uh, the month of July, we will be doing a food drive for fiscal, oh, for Shepherd's House. So we're gonna ask all the employees, if whoever wants to participate, to bring in canned goods or non-perishable items, and we will be collecting that for the Shepherd's House and then the fiscal court will be support, sponsoring the, uh, first Friday in August meal for Shepherd's House. So anybody that can try to come on that day to be there and support them will be sponsoring that meal. Um, Julie covered the bid openings, I'll have to talk about that. Um, coming up in July, uh, July 15th, go ahead and put it on your calendars, is the Farm City Breakfast at the Extension District, and that starts at 7:30 in the morning, and never miss anything.
I hope not.
Okay, I think that's all. I did, but we're gonna have to contend with that if it's lighter time. All right, motion to adjourn.
Make that motion, we.
Magistrate Cullen, second?
Second.
Magistrate Gay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries. We're adjourned. You see why we have a shorter agenda?
You see why we have a shorter agenda?